All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you see us all standing and looking at our chests, please excuse us. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening again. We're going to start with Citizens' input. I know we do have at least one person who's zoomed in under Citizens' input. Christina is the only one? Yeah, just, so Seth Ferguson. Seth, how you doing?
Good, good. Thanks for having me tonight.
Sure.
See everybody.
Good to see you.
You're up.
Okay, so again, for the record, Seth Ferguson, 23 Bird Street. Good to see everybody. So what I wanted to just bring in front of the Board was something that I noticed over the last couple of snowstorms this winter. As I've been around town, and it's primarily been in the Uptown and the Common area. But I noticed quite a bit of blocked accessways and walkways. So I'm thinking about on the Common, as you come around before the car parts store. I can't remember the name of the place that's right there. But I believe that sidewalk has been blocked for a week or two. And it was in the previous storm. In front of Union Straw on the mechanic street side, that's been blocked off. So if you've been up and around the Common or other parts of town, you've probably noticed that there's been sidewalks that either are troubled by the property owners in front of the, or at that particular location. Or there's been plows that had been plowing snow up onto sidewalks and in effect blocking the sidewalks. So that, you know, if you're on the Common and you're trying to walk around the Common, you might have to either walk into the street or climb over a sort of a snowbank, if you will. So there's a couple of things with that. One is safety. So, you know, when I was talking to Dr. You know, maybe last week or whatever. You know, if there's children or seniors or people with pets or something, and they have to walk out into the street, that's a safety issue. And then, secondly, maybe less of importance is just what kind of, you know, walkability we want to have around town in our business district and being able to get from, you know, park in one area and walk to a slightly different location. You know, so there's limited parking in some spots. So we want to be able to say, you know, you can park here with relatively easy access. But if some of those places are, you know, those walkways are blocked, that can be a challenge. So I just, something I wanted to bring to the Board and put to you folks and just get your, sort of your sense of what you think about that. And maybe some steps that we might take to rectify some of the issues that we're having. If you guys think there's an issue at all, but I'll stop there and let you react to that.
Thank you, Seth. You know, generally, under Citizens' input, because it hasn't been listed, there's not a lot of discussion that can take place. But having said that, you know, myself also being a downtown person like you are, there are times when it takes, it seems like it takes a while to clear out certain areas of the downtown area. And for example, the north side of the Rotary, there was really no exit out of the last storm until yesterday. So you could even go clear across, and there was no way to get out without going over a, you know, three and a half, four foot mound of snow. So I hear what you're saying, Seth. I think we've got to forward this to DPW. Bill, what do you think?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll just give a brief response to it. First of all, thanks for bringing it to our attention. But just a couple of things. One, people recall that the last week or two was a pretty difficult week because we had storm after storm after storm, which made it difficult for us to get to the sidewalks as a priority in all areas. So the way I understand it is that the priority routes to sidewalks are those that lead to school routes. And so they try and get those first. That's why you'll probably see some of the other areas getting any attention later on. That said, that there is still quite a few areas in the downtown that could probably be addressed sooner. If we guess, and a lot of time what we do is we'll clear the whole downtown area if it gets to a certain point where it becomes very difficult to pass. And which, you know, it's getting to that point, it looks like the worst going to do it. So that requires, a couple of things requires a lot of time. Usually be done at night because you can't get that done during the day because it's too much interference with the traffic. And the second thing, of course, it's costly to do that to try and remove it from the area, which is another consideration as well. So that, just having said that, it's, I'll certainly take it up with Chris Gallagher and their crew, because I know they've been really out straight trying to keep up with all the storms they just recently had. And of course, the past few days have been a little challenge with the ice. So I, we will, I will certainly take that, I'll have a meeting with them. I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning. I'll take it up with him. And certainly welcome to have anybody's input, including you, Seth, if you want to weigh in as to, you know, some of the priority areas that you'd like to see done as well.
Yeah, that sounds great, Bill. And I, one simple thing that I would mention, and I mentioned that, and I looked at the bylock quickly around snow removal. And it mentioned that there's some parts of with the sidewalk plow, there's going to be some areas that are not, won't be able to be cleared because the plow can't fit through. So in other words, if you have, there's a tree on the Common that the plow can't get through. So it would almost be better if, rather than pushing right up to the tree and leaving a three or four foot pile, they just leave that as it's, you know, as the snow falls almost. Because then it's at least the people walking can crunch it down, kind of, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So this, just one of those kind of simple things I was thinking about. But I appreciate the time, and that sounds like the right next step. So happy to join again or, you know, part in that conversation if it arises. But just wanted to.
Yeah, we'll do the best we can to try and address it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Sean. I think that's it for Citizens' input. We'll go next on the agenda, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that reading on a week, on the meetings each week, each other week now, we're going to be getting these reports directly from Matt Brennan, the new Director of Public Health. And he's given me his report for the tonight's meeting as well. This is vaccination update. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health reports as of February 11th, a total of 95,515 vaccinations have been administered within the state. And that 229,906 of these vaccinations have been administered within the last seven days. As of February 11th, all groups in Phase 1 and Group 1 in Phase 2 are eligible to receive a vaccine. The next order of priority is Phase 2 of the state's vaccination plan are individuals over the age of 65 and individuals with 2+ comorbidities. More information on these groups estimated, this estimated timeline for vaccination is forthcoming. The state is continuing to add appointments at vaccination sites statewide. Last week, a total of 53,000 new appointments were posted at mass vaccination at mass vaccination sites across the state, including Gillette Stadium. In addition, last week, approximately 50,000 pharmacy appointments were added through the federal retail pharmacy program. And another 14,000 appointments were added at the community health centers. Town of Foxborough contributed to that effort by vaccinating 160 eligible residents last week. Vaccination appointments can be scheduled in multiple ways online by visiting www.mass.gov/covidvaccine or through your local participating retail pharmacy, or you can call 211. The closest participating retail pharmacy is CVS located at 2 Roach Brothers Way in northeastern, which schedules appointments online through www.cvs.com. Lastly, to support more of the 75-year-old and older population getting a vaccination site such as Gillette Stadium, effective Thursday, February 11th, an individual who accompanies a person aged 75 years or older to a mass vaccination site will be eligible to receive the vaccine as well if they have an appointment booked at that time. That's a new variant that was just introduced the past few days. COVID-19 variant update. The Mass Department of Public Health announced 19 additional cases of the B.1.1.7 COVID variant, bringing the total number of cases in Massachusetts to 29. The first case in the United States was identified in late December of 2020 in Massachusetts on January 17th, 2021. The B.1.1.7 variant is known to spread more easily and has caused a rapid surge of cases in places like the UK, several other countries, and parts of California and Florida. The best defense against the community spread COVID-19 variant is prevent the spread COVID-19 altogether. New information from the CDC guidelines shows that improving the fit and filtration of masks helps reduce the spread of the virus. Other critical public health measures help prevent the spread of the virus as well, including social distancing, staying six feet away from each other, avoiding groups staying home when you are sick, getting tested if you have the symptoms, or if you are identified as a close contact and by getting vaccinated when it's your turn. Now, on the COVID-19 testing update, currently, the Town of Foxborough is in the red category. The town's daily average incident rate is high at 41.2 cases per 100,000, which is lower than last week. In addition, the percent positive rate is high at 5.36%, which is lower than the last week as well. These numbers have a continuing decline despite being in the higher risk category. I will note that today's numbers, as of this evening, are at 55 cases locally in Foxborough. That's a rather significant jump from where it was. We're down to about, which means that we'll probably be in the yellow probably within another week or so because of the fact that we, our numbers are trending in the right direction at this time. So clearly coming off the holiday gathering scenarios where we had a lot of COVID cases occurring. We're now at a point now where we're trending in the other direction, which is good to see. And more and more people becoming vaccinated, which is another good sign as well. So I want to thank Matt again for that update and that report. And also the Fire Department for providing the latest information on the dashboard that they provide for us on the status of cases here in Foxborough itself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill.
Doc, could I add something to the COVID report?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that I don't know if anybody else has gone up to Gillette, if they've brought anybody or if they qualified for a vaccine. But last Thursday, the first round up there, I wasn't able to get an appointment from my parents. But when they loaded the second round, I was able to get them in last Thursday. They're 81 and 86, so I was glad to get them up there. What we were in and out, it was just, they had everything so organized up there. Bill, have you been up there?
Yes, I have. We've been up there a couple of times, actually. And it's really, really well done, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, very, very well done. And unfortunately for me, they announced the companions Wednesday, and our appointment was Thursday. So I did go on to see if I could get an appointment, but I couldn't. But I was able to, I will be able to get an appointment, get a vaccine when I bring them back for their second shot. And, but it was, you know, really, really well done. I mean, I know the craft organization is not, you know, involved with the actual vaccine process. But the whole thing from pulling up, getting in, everything flowed very, very quickly. Very helpful. My parents were thrilled. Everybody was really nice. And so on both ends, I think it's very, very well done. I just wanted to add that I had been up there myself and brought my parents through. And well done. I know, I know there's a lot of complaints and they're not, you know, the vaccines aren't getting up quick enough. But they were doing a great job up there, and they deserve a lot of credit for what they were doing. So I just wanted to add that. That's all.
Thank you, Seth. Next on the agenda is the Historic District Commission new appointment. So I think maybe Tom, you're going to tell us, oh, you're on mute.
How's that?
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Sorry. So what, we were here a few weeks ago, and we're back to bringing forth a fifth member who's an architect. I mean, we still have a lot of potential things happening in Baker Street, including from 18 Baker Street, which is still an ongoing issue there, involves the planning board as well. But today, wanted to introduce Sean Barrett, who I guess is online. I don't see his face.
Sean's there.
I'm here, Tom.
Okay. So Sean, I guess you're on. You can tell the Board a little bit about yourself and why you want to join us and so forth.
Sure. As Tom said, my name is Sean Barrett. My wife and I have lived at 347 Central Street for about five and a half years now, both from the Massachusetts area. About a year and a half ago, we opened our own architecture firm that we've been operating out of the town. And particularly on my side of the business, I've got a lot of experience with historic properties. Primarily residential work is my type of architecture. And I've been looking for a way to get back to the community. So when Trish and Tom reached out to me to see if I was interested in this board, it seemed like a good fit and a good opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
No, we've been seeing your face more and more, Sean. And I think your wife was just appointed to a committee too. So it's, it's good to see you guys getting more involved, you know, past the housing production plan and any way that you can help.
Yeah, Bethany is on the Housing Authority Commission. Yeah.
All right. Steph, no other questions? You're on mute. There you go.
All right. Motion to appoint Sean Barrett to the Historic District Commission for a term to end May 1st, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Under discussion. I think this is a group that could use some help online. There's members kind of listed that go back, like I know Joy Titus hasn't been on in a while. So just as, I think we've kind of cleaned it up now, and they've got their five members. It's probably a good time to go in and work with them to get their page updated so that it all reflects accurately.
That's a good idea. Yes.
This is Trish Salby. I've been working with Christina and chatting with a couple of other people, and we are actually working on it. But Christina, despite appearing to be Superwoman, is only one person. So we've been throwing a lot of stuff at her from more than one council right now. So she knows. We just wanted to get everybody on before we had her change it twice.
So are you guys, one short or is five?
Five is the official number. We're allowed to have two or three aldernesses as well. And, you know, if we have some other people, we'll let you know. But five is the number.
Nice. I think we're due to report to you in some way who our current officers are and all of that. And that's definitely not my department. But we have, we have a chair and a vice chair and a secretary.
Secretary, correct.
And then we have me and Sean.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Chris, yes.
Bethany, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
All right. Congratulations, Sean. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Good night, Tom. Thank you. Trish, thank you. All righty. Well, I think, no, we're right on time. 7:20, Shaking Crab. They're looking for an all-alcohol common vic and seven-day entertainment license. Are the representatives from the Shaky Crab here?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Mei Hui Hu. My client and the proposed manager is also here, Nicholas Wu.
Hi, I'm Nick.
Hi, Nick. Yep, we could see you both. So the Shaking Crab, we did a little bit of research, at least myself and Bill and Christina, the other day. Why don't you tell us, Nick, a little bit about?
It is a public hearing too, just a reminder about opening that and reading the.
I apologize. You're right. That does have to be done. Do you have that in front of you, Steph? Nope, you're on mute again.
I don't, but.
I have. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Leah.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, beginning at 7:21 in the gala meeting room, or virtually, let's say, because we're all virtual tonight, on the application of an on-premises annual all-alcohol restaurant license authorized by Special Legislation, Chapter 286 of the Acts of 2016 for SC Foxborough LLC, Doing Business as Shaking Crab, for Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Mass., manager Nicholas Wu. Additionally, licensee requests approval of a common vic and seven-day entertainment license for established hours of operation. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Leah. So we do have a all-alcohol license that's available for them. Nick, tell us a little bit about the restaurant. Tell us a little bit, we know where you're going to be at, but let everybody else know where the place is going to be. And a little bit about yourself.
Okay, of course. So we actually, the Shaking Crab is a seafood restaurant, which is a Cajun style that is originally coming from the South. And we think it's a wonderful feat that is actually for the town. And we did some research, and there was no such a similar food as in the Foxboroughs. And then we would like to actually bring this kind of food into town for the communities. And again, we are full-service restaurants. So alcohol is not something that we are really, it's, I would say, actually, probably normally will have 10% of the alcohol selling. And most of the time, it's just actually the food, and the majority are seafoods. And for, the location is right next to the Fox Carsings, and it's by the Starbucks. I think it was formally, I think it's called, it's a Mexican restaurant. And we're going to just do some small renovations and turn around and make a new Shaking Crab locations. For me, I'm a data analyst. And I actually have all the licenses, and then I actually liquor license managers. And I think I will be a good fit for this position.
Okay, just, so you're going to be in the old Mo's?
Yes, Mo's, yes.
Mo's, okay. Down in Foxfield Plaza.
Yes.
And you've got all the certifications, you said?
Yes.
Any questions from the Board?
Yeah, Doc, I've got one. Nick, you just mentioned you're going to do some small renovations before you open. On the application in front of us, it says that you don't have a building permit, and you're not doing any renovations.
Well, the renovation we're talking about is actually the painting of walls. So normally, we did a check with the building departments. They were saying that if you're only printing the walls, you're not actually required to have a building permit.
Okay, so nothing, no renovation work that would require a building permit?
Well, actually, when Mo left, it's pretty much everything was there. And that's why we're actually picking the locations. I think it's actually, it's already a perfect location for Shaking Crab. We don't really need to do too much. So during the pandemic, opening a restaurant is not a great idea. But this is actually an opportunity we're willing to step in because, again, there's not too much initial investment to involve to open Shaking Crab because everything's already there.
Okay, all right. And I actually commend you for starting a business during a pandemic. Good on you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Am I missing the alcohol application? I see the common vic, and I see the entertainment, and I see the workers comp, and I see all the backup. But I don't see that one license, that application. I could just be missing it. It's a kind of a big packet, so let me know.
It should be there. This is Katie. It should be there. It's the largest of the documents. I couldn't combine them all because it was, I just couldn't send it to Christina in one PDF.
So I just, Chris, do you see it?
No, good point. I don't. Unfortunately, I don't see it either. I can see the area where it looked like it was going to be in looks as a public hearing Shaking Crab and all-alcohol license issue. It didn't get connected to that, to the public hearing notice.
Yes, so we, I mean, I know you, it sounds like you guys have turned it in, but I don't see it here for the Board.
Yep, it's something that I can add. I'm sorry that that was missed. It is incomplete application that was sent in to us a couple of weeks ago.
It is a complete application, right?
Yes, it is. I can actually upload it if you just give me a couple of minutes. I apologize. It was something that was sent not via email. So I apologize for that, and I will get that uploaded ASAP.
So the, kind of what I was going to go look is, you know, Nick, have you ever managed, you know, a liquor license before? Are you tip certified, like those pieces that go along with the liquor license? If you can talk to us a little bit about your experience, or if you don't have any yet, what you've done to prepare for this new, you know, arm of the business?
Yes, actually, so when the first time that we opened one Shaking Crab at Newton, Massachusetts, and I was actually the list as the liquor license manager over there. And of course, when we actually start going, opening more times, and then actually I start taking off. And so we have a manager right now managing that location. And so, yes, actually, I had about two years of the working experience with the liquor license. And we've been very careful about serving the alcohols.
Any other questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. I was by that location today, Nick, to take a look to see if any work has begun. Have you, are you looking to get started? What's your timetable for getting started over there?
I think our lease is contingent on the liquor license. So I'm thinking actually right now, if we get a yes from the Board, and we were thinking actually start doing some legwork on the property right now. But I think that timeline will be sometime late of this month. And hopefully, we can finish the paintings by March, and maybe open the door, get ready, and by April. That's my best hope.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just so you're aware, I think you know how this works. But the, you know, tonight is the first step in terms of the process, more or less, of getting the Board, if the Board approves, then gets sent to the ABCC, and then they will do their process. And that takes a few weeks to get through that, just so you know. And so as we get it back, obviously, you can officially proceed. But as long as you have the approval from the town, it's rare that anything happens that would change that decision.
I think, whoop, hold on, sorry. There we go. All right, just minimizing that. So do we want to hold off on a vote till we get those downloaded?
We have them now. The only thing that I know, yeah, if you refresh it, you can see it now. So the, my only question now that we can see it is on section, on the section of the liquor license where it talks about 6B previously held interest in alcoholic beverage, it says that there's none.
I'm sorry. Will you say that again?
On section 6B of the application, it asks about previously held interests in an alcoholic beverage license. And, you know, there's nothing listed there, which I think he just let us know that he did have a liquor license before.
It's not under my names. We actually partnershiped. So the, another one is actually under my partners. So this is actually the first one under my names.
If I may, I think you are referring to Section 6A?
6B.
In alcohol beverages licenses?
I was referring to Section 6B. I see the list on 6A. But if he's saying, it sounds like Mr. Wu's saying he was never named, so it would be accurate then based on what he's saying. It's a first-time liquor license in your name.
Yes, in terms of preparing these applications, they sometimes can be quite confusing. I think from my perspective, when I fill out this application, any existing licenses will be disclosed to Section 6A, which Nicholas does have quite a bit of a participation in a few licenses, which is, you know, disclosed in 6A and attachment to supplement 6A. 6B, from my understanding, are the licenses that have been terminated or businesses that have been sold that he owned in the past. That's why there is none, because all his licenses are ongoing business. None of them have been sold or terminated. And therefore, 6B is left blank.
Okay.
Leah, did you see there was 6A, a section down below that says he was involved in a beer and wine license in several different locations, Cambridge, Boston, Brookline, Quincy, and Newton. The question that would. Um, the, the, the question that there would draw from that is that have you had any experience with an all alcohol license?
And he mentioned Milton, which is not listed here. That's why I had asked.
Yes, actually the license we, uh, we have actually the older, oh, uh, alcohol licenses, not just actually beer and wine. Full liquor license.
Which location?
All of them.
And is there a Milton one? Cause that's not on the attachment.
Milton? No, we don't have any location in Milton.
Okay, I thought you said.
I thought you said Milton.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I said in Newton. I'm sorry. That's. Yeah, Newton A is a full liquor license. Yes.
Okay, I, I miss, I miss Sergio. All right.
So Bill, do we need that clarified on the application at all or?
Yeah, it is, it is a little misleading because it says just beer and wine on all the, all the, uh, the references to your alcohol service. So I think it would be good to, to clarify that and clean it up to, to say all, all the health service. Cause it's, it's misleading. It's misleading to us. It could be misleading to the state as well.
I will make that correction.
Thank you.
And I guess the only other thing maybe to add, uh, usually this was Dave Feldman's thing was, uh, Fox cares. Um, Nick, there's a, there's a program in Foxborough and you can ask, uh, Katie, uh, 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 at another time, but there's a called Fox cares. And it's a group of, uh, people like yourself that get together and just, um, talk about, uh, issues and legislation and, uh, uh, best practices for, uh, uh, restaurants with, uh, that hold liquor licenses.
Okay, well do.
Yeah. Um, any other questions?
Um, yeah, and just, um, I, I, I think you said you, you've had a lot of experience and no issues. But so, um, in your other locations, no violations with any of your other establishments?
So far, no.
Okay, perfect. And, um, and all the, um, all the employees will be tip certified as well?
Yes, it's a, it's a requirement that they need to get a tips and before they serve in the alcohol.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope, I'm satisfied.
I'm, okay. Um, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Definitely yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Okay. And then we'll take, uh, motions. Do those, um, do each of the licenses have to be separate, Bill? Or can they all be lumped together?
Are you, you really should act on separately, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, there are two, there are three licenses or two, three. One's a common Vic, the other one's.
And the seven day.
The seven day, right. They should be acted on separately.
We haven't done it that way before. Actually, we, we can do multiples at once. It's fine. Like we did the whole license renewals in 2021 as a batch. So we can do it as a batch. The way it's listed out, it lists all alcohol, common Vic and entertainment license.
Okay, I just want to make sure we did it right. And there you go, Steph, the way it's, uh, written.
Okay, and so, so, so Bill, we'll, we'll make the motion, vote on it. And then the cleaning up of the application can happen afterwards.
Right, Katie will follow up with that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, motion to open, wait a minute, I'm, hold on, wrong one. Motion to approve the 2021 all alcohol common Vic and seven day entertainment licenses for SC Foxborough LLC DBA, a shaking crap.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Definitely yes.
Mark, yes. Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Congratulations. Good luck, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Welcome to town.
Welcome to town.
All right. So in our, uh, rotating, uh, department head updates, uh, we have our, uh, new, um, building commissioner Barry Ringler, uh, going to give us a, uh, update on what's happening in his whole, uh, two months of being, uh, uh, our building, uh, commissioner. Uh, welcome, Barry. Uh, don't forget you're on mute.
Am I on mute now?
You're off mute now.
You're good, you're good.
Good now? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So you're up.
I'm up. Okay, yeah. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of months here has been great, a great town. Uh, the update here is, you know, business as usual. Permit applications are coming in for plumbing, electrical, gas, mechanical, building, of course. And they're going right out. Uh, regularly we're doing our inspections and, uh, we're doing our inspections of all the town owned buildings as well, like the Burell School is getting close to doing its phase three over there. And that's moving along really smoothly. They put a big push on a project to have the front main entranceway opened up, uh, rather than going through a temporary, uh, way to get out of the building. A lot narrower, a lot smaller. Uh, so they had, uh, uh, you know, added more people to the site and moved it right along. Now it's moving even further. They also came up with an idea of instead of replacing the piping down the center of the hallways, which they initially were going to do, they decided to do it another way that's not going to be tearing up the main hallways, which helps to have the process move faster and better, um, with that project. Up at the Patriots Stadium there, there's a new permit that was issued for a new building. Uh, it's a, uh, known as a wind tunnel, which is a, a tall building. It's actually as tall as a skyscraper, a high rise, which some people would call a skyscraper, you know, scraping the sky. But that's, that's going to be happening. Uh, so that's exciting. And, uh, uh, you know, they, they're, they're doing a lot of renovations to the stadium up there as well. And, um, you know, I, I'm eating potatoes, kitchens and bathrooms have been coming along regularly. And, and apartment's been moving very smoothly. And we've actually taken the online permitting, uh, further. So we, uh, we're setting it up now that you can get to your permits and apply for your, uh, permits all on your phone. Right now it's, it's not possible, uh, but it is coming that you'll be able to apply on your phone and get to your permits on your phone, rather than, uh, the requirement and the need through the system to be at your PC. So it's getting more and more friendlier. There's a lot more people that are more willing to do it online than to come up to the building department, which helps to reduce the amount of people we have coming in the town hall with respect to the coronavirus. And also keeps the workload in the building department down, um, as in written paperwork that used to come in that our department would then have to put together. Uh, now that's not happening. Now it's just all online and the user is doing it themselves, much more productive office. And, um, uh, it's just a lot better system that's really starting to shine. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the board? Uh, Leah?
So, um, welcome. I, I know you're stepping into a role that's turned over quite a bit recently. And, you know, I, I'm always, you know, I, I want to be sure that things are smooth for our residents and our businesses. So.
Absolutely.
You know, as you settle in, you know, just thinking about, you know, continuity plans, if you were to ever go out, I can think of one or two things in town that have been maybe a little frustrating, you know, because of the turnover and a couple of different people in the role. Um, so, you know, just keeping that in mind as you move forward for our businesses and residents that, you know, you could be working on a project and essentially be on your third, um, you know, building commissioner in, in a rather short time, so.
Yeah, I'm aware. Yeah. Thank you.
And then how about, you know, where the town website was down? Um, and I was hoping, Bill, maybe you could give us an update of this, you know, later under the town manager's update. But, um, you know, did that all go okay with the online permitting while the town website was down? Anything that we need to think about there?
Uh, Christina, uh, Metcalf had come up with a great idea to have a temporary, you know, here's what to do. And kept it running. So we were very fortunate that, yes, things were running. It didn't affect it. So went well.
Great.
Good. Any, any other questions, uh, from the board?
Moving up with, uh, what Leah said. So Barry, you're not allowed to leave. You had a building inspector here for a really long time at one point. So, so please stick around.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you. I, and I, I think I'd be crazy to leave this town. You people are just people. It's great. You don't have any hidden agendas. You're all professional and you just, you just want the, what the common person wants and who could ask for more? It's like a big family working on this town. It really is. I'm looking at the clock. It's 20 minutes to eight and I don't want to go home.
Barry, I hope your family is not watching this, especially your wife.
Probably is.
You have a shorter commute now.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, you know, you can, you can thank, uh, Bill, um, and, uh, Joe, uh, Mike. Those two guys, let me tell you, uh, I, I hear rumors that, that Bill's, uh, getting ready for retirement. And, uh, I, geez, I, I, I hope he sticks around a lot longer than what I'm hearing. So, uh, they, they've making every day here for me comfortable, uh, and, and helping me along. Uh, uh, you know, enormously every day. So, uh, Christina and Katie, my staff, everybody and anybody is helpful. As everybody knows, this is my first, uh, position as a building commissioner. So I'm, I'm learning as I, as I go, you know, to be a commissioner, um, you know, and like a meeting like this. And, uh, but, uh, nothing but help all day long, every day. And, and, uh, it, it's super support. It's fantastic. And, uh, I, I want to thank everybody uh, for helping me, uh, even the littlest thing. Here's the pencil shop and, you know, just every little thing, uh, they're there. And the support is, is great. And thank you all.
Oh, thank, thank you, Barry.
And then I didn't threaten him before I said this tonight. So just so you know. No, it's like, thank you, Barry. It was very nice of you to say that. But Barry's, you know, Barry's been a joy to work with since he came here as well. I just want to say thanks for, for being here. Um, yeah, we had a little bit of turnover. It was just unfortunate set of circumstances. And, and, uh, sometimes it happens. So we had, we had a cou- couple of situations where on both instances, there were personal situations that evolved that they had nothing to do with us. It was just, they, their family situations changed and they needed to try and address them. And so when, when it happened in life, it was a life changing situation of both cases. So, um, so I think, you know, I just, it, it was, I guess it was Barry's time to, to come here and I'm really glad he did. So that's worth that well. So we're glad, glad he's here.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you for being with us tonight and your presentation.
Sure. Is there anything else anybody wants to ask me related?
Oh, I think that's it.
So, so my wife didn't expect me to be home soon?
Well, no, we can tell you that you have to stay online here and listen right up until the end. How's that?
Okay, let me know.
You don't have to, Barry. Just make sure you pick up the extra gallon of milk on the way home and all the stuff that goes with that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
About that and the vitamin B.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
Good night, Barry. Thank you.
Good night, Barry.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up is the, uh, annual town meeting, uh, warrant review, uh, Bill.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have, um, um, in this warrant, um, we have a total of 22 articles for consideration. Um, the 22 articles, uh, we had up until Friday, we had actually 20 articles. We had two citizen petition articles, which I'll get it to, uh, later, later tonight, uh, later after I make the presentation on the first view. So if you just follow along with me. Um, the, right now that the meeting is still planned to be held on, on the, uh, on the, the 10th, uh, 10th of May, which is the, the second Monday in May, which is typically our, our time to do that according to, uh, the way things function here in Foxborough. And also, um, that right now, we, we just, I just had a very initial conversation with, with, with Bob Cotler about the location. And right now we, you know, we think it's going to still be at the high school. But there's been quite a bit of discussion in the region about doing outdoor meetings, things of that nature. But, um, we, we haven't really explored those options fully. We just had the conversation today for the first time. So, um, right now it's, it's fair to assume that the meeting will still be at the, uh, at the, at the high school as it was last year. Um, so the, um, the, the first three articles are standard articles, annual town elections, town reports and reports of committees. Uh, those are not actionable items by, by the town meeting. They just, but they are required, uh, uh, content for the, for the warrant itself. So they will be, uh, the first actionable item is really the operating budget. Um, and that is something that we're currently working on. I'll have an update of that and where we stand with that process right after this, uh, right after this discussion. The CIP budget is, uh, something that will be, uh, act, be, is actually included in the budget document itself. So you, you'll see if you look through the document itself, it's already in there. But that won't be, uh, viewed for the first time until, uh, this, the first week in March. Uh, when we typically do a meeting, uh, on a Saturday to, to meet with everybody about their requests. Um, there are a number of requests this year. That doesn't mean we're actually going to be able to fund them. In fact, there's been quite a bit of thought about whether or not we would even recommend postponing a lot of them until the fall. Uh, because of the fact we want to make sure that where our, uh, financial position is and that we can support, uh, some of those without, um, you know, while postponing them to another year. There are some things that we really need to look at seriously and that's school buses. Uh, because I know that that's something that they like to replace annually. And, um, that I know that the, 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 the technology pieces are important to keep up with, especially in the environment that we're in right now with, with COVID-19 and, and the limit, the people working from home or remotely and et cetera. So those are things that we really have to take a look at. But, uh, most other items will probably be things that we'll look at, maybe so we can push off until the fall, maybe do something in the fall, in the fall town meeting. Um, the revolving fund for the annual spending limits, uh, there's several revolving funds that are located, uh, that are in the, in the town throughout in the various town departments. That's something that we set limits to every year. It's an annual, annual article for consideration. It's not a surprise there. Um, and so that, that's something, that's, that's something that we would, we would do every single year. The amendment to article 23 of 2019, that's a case where, where this was a, uh, this, this is a borrowing article which, uh, was done for the, uh, what, I think was the water project, the water, water tank project, which is, um, it's, it's, the, the article itself is fine. The one thing that the, uh, that we cannot do though is that when you, when you receive proceeds through a bond sale, uh, we like to roll that into the actual, uh, proceed into the actual issue itself. It actually helps, helps to reduce the long-term liability of the, of the, of the, of the sale itself. So it actually reduces the cost. And so we like to do that, but unfortunately the language wasn't contained in that original article. And so we're actually just correcting that piece of it. So there's no change to the article itself, other than to include the language, which allows us to roll in the proceeds from the sale of the, uh, bond issue. Uh, the steelwork is contract A and contract B. Those, all the next four contracts, the contracts that are under consideration that are, are being negotiated presently. It's entirely possible. We may not get, I'll get to all those for consideration, but we're putting them in now just so that we can, and as well as the voiding contract library as well, like voiding library contract. So those five, uh, five, uh, collective bargaining agreements, which we anticipate will be ready, but not necessarily, uh, but not guaranteed to be ready at this point in time. Uh, we have a singular wireless, um, situation where the singular wireless, um, has approached the town about, renting space off the public safety tower at the public, at the public safety building. Uh, Ed will probably recall, recall this, that we did that with AT&amp;T a number of years ago. Uh, well, uh, singular approach is because they need similar space. And so what we did was we put it out to bid. Um, and they came back and they were the only bidder at the time. Uh, but they gave us, uh, they'll, they'll actually give us, uh, I think it's like $25,000 a year towards the rental of the space. So it's, it's a revenue, uh, piece for us. But we, in order for us to do that, because it is town property, we do have to, uh, do have to get the permission from town meeting to do this. So it's, uh, something that we, uh, seeking permission to do. Uh, the land transfer from the town is, uh, is the article, uh, involving, um, I believe this is the, the one involving the, um, let me just go to it because I, I just trying to remember which, this is, this is a couple that we have to do. Let me see here.
One off of Oak Street.
Yeah, this is one off of Oak Street. So this is the, the vote to authorize the board to convey land. Also on, off of Oak Street, shown as parcel three, uh, one, layup plan. This is the, um, yeah, it's for the conservation commission. So, um, there, this is a, um, pertaining possibly 29, uh, 29.97 acres to the conservation commission to hold said property as, as a butterfly habitat. This is something that the, uh, it's, um, it's land transferred to them so that way, so the land cannot be developed into the future. And so it actually puts it into a, as, as effectively a conservation restriction.
Is that where Camp Lincoln Hill was? It's gotta be if it's 29 acres.
Uh, it's, it's close to that area. Yes, close to that area.
And is it normal that they have a stipulation like I've never I've never seen the butterfly habitat?
This is a rare because it is such a rare it is, believe it or not, it's a rare habitat. So it's one in which they they've actually researched this to the point where it actually is one of the most one of the most rare habitats anywhere in the state. So it's one of these areas that they like they like to to keep in that in that condition. State actually believe weighed in on this too and asked us to consider that. The land transfer from the water department is the is is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of water soon commissioners to transfer and convey a parcel off of Oak Street, containing approximately four point one acres, shown on a parcel plan law, approval not required plan. This is another piece of that land off of Oak Street that the water commission needs to convey back to the town. From the water department to the to the to the town for similar to the butterfly. It's part of the part of that land as far as the butterfly habitat. This is something Chris Chris Gallagher had indicated to us that this is something that they've been trying to protect for a while. And it needs to be done and put into this kind of it needs to be transferred to town or for them to do that. Article sixteen is the stretch energy code. Now, this goes back to I think the board we require will will remember that we actually had a visit from a resident in town was interested in in town pursuing the Green Communities Act.
And and for
And this is this is another step in the direction of towards achieving that. The stretch energy code is a requirement of of the Green Communities Act. And Foxborough is actually one of the lagging communities and not that has not done this. Become a Green Communities Act, not because we weren't interested in doing it, it's because a lot of the things that we think we had already done in town. We'd already done a lot to actually put this to put the town in a good position to to reduce energy costs, building very efficient buildings, things of that nature. So we'd already done a lot of the things required of, but we just we're trying to pursue because we then become eligible for grant programs under the under the Green Communities Act. So this is one of the requirements of that is that we have to adopt the stretch energy code, which by law there is is now adopted on statewide by many communities throughout the Commonwealth as a standard for for building. I could have actually had Barry weigh in on this, but it's actually pretty common. Article seven, Article seventeen, I'm sorry.
That's a board of selectmen one, not like a planning board code.
That's correct. Yeah, because it would come under because it's a stretch energy clause actually comes under the border, the building department, not the not the planning department.
Okay, so that would only the fifty percent vote, then not the two thirds due to the type of
That is a fifty fifty fifty, I believe. Well, we'll we haven't reviewed all these with town council yet, but we'll 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 get the actual quantum of vote for each one to be sure about that. But I do believe it's a it's a general bylaw change, if anything, not a not a not a two not a not a zoning by which requires a two thirds, which would be fifty fifty. The sewer district revision is just adding ninety-six mechanic street to the to the sewer system. Something the board recall recall will does we do every single year, and that is to add you know, the the amount of of new new properties to the system and requires to actually to me to include them into the district. The floodplain overlay district is is a new bylaw. It's actually quite lengthy. It was actually recommended to us by the by the by the by the what is it? The the federal the court court of engineers that actually oversees a lot of the floodplain work. And this is something that they had recommended to us as as a new consideration. I'm not the expert in this one, quite honestly. I think it's something that Paige would actually weigh in on and help explain to you. But it's, as you can see, it's very detailed. It's very it's a much more comprehensive bylaw than the one we currently have. All right. Moving on to eighteen nineteen nineteen is is actually just cleaning up the historic district boundaries. There was a there it was found there was a couple of errors in the boundaries. And so those are just this is just cleaning up the boundaries of the map itself. This is not changing the map, changing the the boundaries at all. This is this is something that just this is a correction to the map, just to make sure that the the map that you see is accurate. Article twenty is is a correction to table abuses for assisted living. And that's to see if the town will vote to amend three point six, one point six to may turn that into a to allow assisted living facilities to be located in the town. We only have one such facility as the Doolittle Home currently. And that's to clarify the the need for for this and other in other areas of town as well. Except for Condon Way as a public way is Article twenty-one. And that is that was that was added. So we actually have twenty-three articles now. I apologize for that. We Condon Way is a last minute submission by the planning department because that road is now ready for acceptance. So we can actually accept it as a public way in Foxborough. Article twenty is a citizen's petition which was submitted Friday. This looks to be identical to the language that was submitted a couple of years ago by by a sitting AdCom member. And then but which was rejected by Tom at the time. I it's been it's interesting because no, there has been no discussion of this on any level that I can think of after that I've heard from anyone as to why this is being resubmitted. So I'm trying to determine how this how this got here, but and why the concerns because the way it was turned out the last meet last time any was that the system was working as well as could be. There really wasn't any concerns about the way the system was working. So it couldn't be identified as as a concern as to why things were doing what they were working incorrectly if there was a problem. And so again, I'm not sure why this was being resubmitted for consideration.
I think that was a close vote, though. I don't think that I don't think that was a a runaway that it wasn't accepted.
No, but it was it was actually a significant difference, though. It was it was probably it wasn't a close vote, as I call it. It was close to about, I think it was about a seventy thirty vote. It was a pretty it wasn't that close. It was and I think, you know, there was a number of glances to you. There was quite a bit of discussion about it. And there was a lot of lot of debate about it, but I don't think it really in the end it was a close vote.
I but you know what? I think I think the final vote took place on the second night of town meeting, where not as many people showed up either. I I believe. I mean, I know, I mean, I mean, I know this didn't this didn't come back from from the same person who brought it. But I mean, so there was a list of people. Nobody affiliated with it last time.
I noticed that. But so I'm just curious as to why, if there was a concern, what was the concern so that we can try and address it for them? Or because, you know, as as you look at this process, this would actually essentially add a fourth review committee to this process. Because currently you have you have the you have the capital planning committee, which is established by the charter. Then you have the the it gets submitted to the board of selectmen for consideration. And then it gets considered to the AdCom for consideration. And then it goes to town meeting. So you have three different committees. Look at those those things and that even the people that these are all these are all three are recommendations to town meeting. The only board that gets to vote on it is town meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure why the need for the fourth review going in there, if there was a concern, it hasn't been conveyed to us as to what that concern is. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. So going back and then moving on to Article twenty-three, this is one which we, you know, we reviewed this one closely and we we don't disagree with the with the action being requested here. In fact, the only the only question is whether or not this is the only way that should be done is to resolve this because it is an amount of money that 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 should be conveyed back to the individual. It's it was determined that this this person was taxed in error. And I'll be honest, it's the first time I've seen this happen in thirty-seven years. I've never seen such a situation occur. So it's very, very extremely rare that you'd see something like this happen. So we do agree with the action. The question is, is this the right action to be done? And near as I can tell, it is there it is certainly one remedy of doing this. And we're not sure if there's another way. We're researching that right now to determine that. So so it it wouldn't be something necessarily would have to be done by Tom any, but certainly the action could be done and looking if it can be done in another way. All right. But if it doesn't, if there isn't another way, then certainly, you know, the article stands and would have to be acted by Tom meeting. If in fact, we find another way to resolve it without having to go to town meeting, then the action company would be to just to 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 take the matter and and definitely postpone it for consideration. So since there'd be no no action needed for the for the town meeting at that time. All right, those are the the articles for consideration.
Hey, question, Bill, are we gonna last week we were gonna do a special town meeting within
Yes, that's that's the next action up before you, Chris, is to look at that.
Okay, then let's just go back to Article twenty-three. Bill and I talked earlier tonight. I I want to try to resolve this before it even gets to town meeting as soon as possible. If if this person has in fact been paying taxes for twelve, thirteen, fourteen years on a piece of property they never owned. Came on us as a town for doing it. So we got to rectify that quickly.
There are two steps to this, though, Chris, and just and then thanks for for pointing in us. But there first is is that we've we've asked the individual to file for an abatement with the assessors office. I actually discussed that possibility several months ago. And but now is the time to file for an abatement because it is February. And anybody has a has a concern about their tax, taxes, their value, or if they're being attacked, being taxed improperly, they can certainly request the the assessors to to consider that. So the request is so we've asked this kid this individual to take care of that. She has in fact filed that, which is which actually was filed as early as today. So that step is that means that 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 will take care of the issue. It doesn't continue to be a problem going forward. The second part is to is to is to consider the issue of the wages of the payments going back. And so that's the part we're still trying to resolve.
And Phil, this goes, you know, way back.
Right.
With the abatement, you know, it like I just think if I was asked to, you know, provide proof or something, you know, that's going to be nearly impossible.
Well, not not necessarily, because we actually do have the payments going back, the the payments received by the town going back to two thousand and six.
Okay, all right.
So we did. We did actually have that information in our records. So that part of it is yeah, I agree with you that normally that would be a difficult thing, but we did have it in our own records that the person did make the payments.
Yeah, I just I think that we don't want to see the person have to jump through hoops. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not trying to do that. We we're trying to try to remedy the situation. Like I said, it's it's something I've never witnessed before ever. So it's and I actually preceded myself and anybody, actually, I think most people and that are working in the finance department now. So I think the the situation is something we want to fix and move on from it.
Yeah, I I think we all had the same feeling when we read that, that we want to make this as painless as possible for the for the citizen.
Correct.
So unless there's any other questions, we're going to move on to the special town meeting. Leah, you had a little chat. You have a good point. I think right now, Bill, would be a good time to re-explain why this the special town meeting, how we're going to function that, rolling that into the town meeting. And the differences between the two, one being a bylaw and the other being set forth by us, the selectmen.
And how how all that timing will work, because someone asked me about it today, and quite frankly, I could not explain it. So like really basic back back to foundation.
All right. So so here's how this works. Is that there is essentially there was it was a special town meeting within the annual. Is the way this functions is that it's a separately called meeting by the board. The 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 annual town meeting is is more or less laid out by the town's bylaws and charter, where it says that the selectmen shall shall hold an annual meeting, which which shall be conducted in the second Monday of May. And it and it's one where the town's business is conducted in which we we annually address the annual budget. The 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 fiscal year budget for the upcoming fiscal year, the fiscal capital plans, you know, but changes to bylaws, et cetera. That's the annual meeting that that is set forth by the bylaws. Now, the you know, the other meeting, which is a special town meeting is is called strictly by the board of selectmen. Now, a person could call for it, could ask for it for a special time in to be called. There'd have to be a petition before the board of selectmen to do that. The extraordinary situation usually doesn't happen. Does again, none of those rare situations that occurs. But you have in this case, we're asking for a special time because we didn't hold one in the fall, as everybody recalls. We didn't do one this year. So we have three or four items that really should be resolved for this current fiscal year. And the only way you can do this is to hold a special town meeting within the within the annual. So so what happens during that is and what happens is that you actually have a separate set of of people, people will be enrolled effectively twice for the meeting because one for the annual, one for the special. It'll be held the same night. But what will happen is the moderator will effectively adjourn the they'll call the annual time to order. And then he will effectively adjourn the annual time to hold the special. I'm not quite it hasn't been I've never seen it done here. So I don't know how he plans to do that. That will be entirely his call. But I do think usually you see it happen in the in the first, you know, first few minutes to get the special out of the way. And then and then we move on to the annual town meeting itself. The annual town meeting businesses for the next fiscal year, a special time would be to to address issues in the current fiscal year. So this is for twenty twenty-one fiscal year, twenty twenty-one issues. And you have have with contained with that that we know of right now, four articles for consideration. Three of them are collective bargaining agreements for this current fiscal year, the police department and the and the two steelworker contracts. And then also there is there is a revolving fund that the need was established during the year due to COVID nineteen. And that was for computer repairs through the IT department as well as for for vaccinations. So that we're so the fire department could actually collect money for doing vaccinations on certain on several cases. So those are the the two needs that we are four needs that we have within the special town meeting that will occur. Again, that what they what has to happen there is that the board of selectmen would would effectively call for a special time, which I do recommend that you do. That you open the warrant tonight and that you close it at your next meeting, which is on May second. And that and articles for consideration should be submitted no later than four o'clock on May second. That way the board can consider those items at your meeting on on May second.
March second.
March, I'm sorry, March second at your next meeting. Okay.
I think, Bill, you did a perfect job explaining it. Leah, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I like how you I was honestly worried about losing people and having the two meetings in one night. I mean, the the annual is a long one. So I like the idea of doing the special one first and kind of getting it out of the way. I wasn't sure why we didn't have a draft of it, but since we're opening it tonight, that makes sense now that you've explained that. So, you know, if we're going to close it next week, I assume we'll just see the draft before we close it next week, like we're seeing this one now. Right?
Exactly. People theoretically could 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 submit something right up until the right up until the the this this the right up until four o'clock on the on the day of that you close it. It's interesting, too, that what a selectman have the ability have a little more leeway, including articles on the warrant or the special. With an annual, there are a lot of standard standard ones that get get included. And also the two petitioned articles go on automatically. Because that's just that's the way the the law is structured. So if you have a petition article, they go on, they go on automatically. Now, if you want a special, an article to go on a special time, it requires more signatures. With an annual only requires ten, I think it's like a hundred signatures for a special town meeting, if I'm not mistaken, for an article for a special time.
Hey, question, if it is our town meeting to call a special, can we you had said that, you know, you're not sure how the moderator is going to do it either at the beginning or sometime. Can we specifically have it? Like the regular town meeting starts at seven thirty. Can we call this special town meeting for seven o'clock?
You could ask for that. I did. I think what would happen is you still have to call. You have to you still have to convene the annual time in first.
Okay.
How that works. Okay.
All right.
You follow me? So so I think
Yeah.
No, and that typically starts at seven thirty. All right. So so I do think, though, that and you know, it's possible, maybe it's a good idea to bring Frank in to talk about the logistics of it, because I've never done one here. And I don't I don't really I want to steal his thunder in this one because it's really his call and how he runs the meeting itself. But but I do think, though, that you do you have the authority over the warrant itself and what gets included in the warrant and the calling of the meeting itself. But the the operating operations of the meeting are strictly within the guidelines of the moderator's role.
All right. Yeah, I would check with him then to get it all ironed out.
And maybe they can even come to the to the March second meeting because, you know, there was some confusion last year about opening and closing and posting. And now we're in this weird situation that makes it confusing anyway. So I think it would be a good idea to invite
Not a bad idea.
With that being said, do we even have to open it tonight? Or can we wait until the March second one?
But the reason why I recommend you open it tonight, Chris, is because But the reason why I I recommend you open it tonight, um Chris, is because it's a timing issue. You still have to re-provide adequate timing for for the for the review of the warrant articles before the AdCom. And and they're they're also reviewing the the annual at the same time. So I I don't wanna, I don't wanna squeeze their time if we can help that.
Okay.
All right, so um Steph, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to open a special town meeting warrant within the May tenth two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And for the special town meeting warrant to close on March second, two thousand twenty-one at four o'clock PM.
And just under discussion, we, so we have verified that with Frank and Bob that this timing is works. Cuz remember how last year we like opened it or closed it and then we had to go back and fix something, so we have.
That 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 had to do with the annual time. It had nothing to do with this, nothing to do with the special. So the 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 special, it we just, the the posting of the warrants are two separate article, two separate processes. So we'll continue to treat this as two separate processes. But the way that this typically runs later is that there's one meeting within the other. So that's how, that's the only way you can really do it. You don't really hold it on a separate night. Um it's usually done within the same the same night, or if you know, if if anything goes, it gets extended, it's usually the annual gets extended uh beyond the uh the second, beyond the first night, if there isn't enough time. Right?
Yeah, that don't make sense. I guess what I'm asking is so we have, can we have talks to Frank and Bob about what we're doing?
I I have not specified, I'm I'm Bob and I talked about the the special uh today briefly. But we did not talk about the logistics of it. And it, you know, if there's any concern about that, that certainly can be can be addressed at the meeting next uh on May second, March second. But the call, opening and closing of the warrant is is purely within the board of selectmen's call. It's purely within your role.
Oh, we we will clean it up, Leah.
Where where it it would be almost like if we if we didn't open it, if we opened it too late.
That's right.
We were better to do it tonight. Time wise, we're good.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, the the action fee tonight is entirely appropriate. I don't have any concerns about that. If 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 there's any concerns about the logistics of it going forward, that's a conversation we wanna have with Frank and involve to make sure we don't run into any issues. Okay?
All right, roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
And yes.
Leah, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, um. Uh here we go, uh uh Bill, the uh FY twenty-two budget and timeline update.
All right, so thank you. So I think um I am responding to this because it was apparently was some confusion based on some of the comments that were made at the at the AdCom meeting last week. And I think it's important to sort of clarify that the the board of selectmen have not voted on any of the, have not voted on the budget yet. They they, you have, you have heard it, you have considered it, you have looked at it, but you have not taken any action on it. Your action officially comes uh later on. So let me just say what right now, we're we're in the week of February sixteenth, fifteen, sixteen. The next um uh action before the town right now is a CIP request that reviewed and distributed to the CIP committee. And uh we already have that, if we already have that information out to the committee itself. Um so that's just, that's just a deadline for getting it out to everyone so they have it. Um the Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, the advisory and la- guys advisory liaisons, the committee committee will review uh the budget request. They already been doing that. Um the uh Saturday, March sixth, the capital improvement committee will meet to review the requests. On Wednesday, March uh on Tuesday, March ninth, the board of selectmen uh for a second, we'll review the CIP request. I think we're gonna have to push that to um a week ahead because we're actually, we're, that's that's that week is actually, that's off a week by the fact that you're you're meeting on March second, so you're probably gonna meet on March sixteenth will be your next meeting. Uh which which would then push the advisory committee to review on the seventeenth. Okay, so uh they could stay, could they're ready to go both, could they're, they could start earlier than you. There's no uh necessarily no particular issue as to why you have to do it in that particular order unless the committee wants to hear, hear, you hear the board's position on it. Um Friday, March uh twenty-sixth, the comprehensive balanced budget documents prepared and distributed. Um on March thirtieth, the selectmen's final recommendation of the budget. So the board, the the board doesn't even vote on the budgets until March thirtieth.
Yeah, I think just, you know, I'll I'll, I don't know if everyone, did everyone have a chance to watch AdCom last week or not? I I know that everyone may not have. So so here's kind of what happened. They were talking at AdCom. And I don't think it was intentional, but there was direction given to the AdCom that the board of selectmen had had a meeting. And we took a vote to have it, the to to keep the budget at the two and a half percent increase. So you know, my feedback coming out of that was, that's not necessarily true. We had the budget summit where we talked about it, but uh what was presented to AdCom, you know, remember two years ago where we were presented, you know, we can either cut, we can have level services or we can expand services. It was almost presented to AdCom like what had happened last year, it happened this year, and I just wanted to clarify to AdCom and to everyone, you know, that we had not taken a vote to give a direction on the budget. I think that you know, I understand Bill thinks that's, you know, it's the only way to kinda go right now. Um you know, given where we're at, but it's just, it's kind of more clarification on what actions the board of selectmen have taken thus far rather than the timeline. And I think if there is gonna be a change to the timeline, we need to like see it in writing as we're just like rattling through dates, i- it's hard to follow without it, you know, in front of us. Um so that was really the clarification that I had asked for. You know, to go in front of AdCom is that, you know, we have not, we did not take a vote and give direction on a percentage for the budget.
Well, I I the one thing I will just just respond back to is that that was the reason for that meeting was to get direction. If I and and I didn't hear anybody push back on that direction, I offered the direction to everybody and nobody suggested anything different. So I guess my, I guess I I was, the assumption was that there wasn't any other direction to go with it at that evening cuz I, cuz the reason why I have to hold that meeting is to give direction to the to the to the budget preparers, which is the union, I mean, the uh the employees, uh the department heads who need directions so that they can prepare their budgets accordingly. So that's what we did, and we we followed that guideline effectively. Um as you saw from the results, and actually, I'm I'm, I can actually talk about that a little bit more. We actually had some good news on some budget fronts as well. Uh that we think we can actually, you know, that some of that, um some that we can actually reduce some of our reserve use of the money, of money that we had applied towards the budget can be reduced. Uh because uh some of the numbers came in better than we thought. Uh actually, right now, I think we're, we came up, we've come up with at least another three hundred thousand dollars in savings uh from the, from the original budget proposal. Uh we think that may be more, so that's that's a good thing, but I I do think we're in better shape than we thought.
And I think what you just said is more accurate than than what was discussed and presented on AdCom that there was a meeting with the board of selectmen, we were presented three options and took a vote. You know, we had a budget summit, you presented it to us. Um and it was the same meeting that AdCom was on. So I just, I didn't want AdCom to think that there was another meeting that they weren't part of, where we took a vote, which is how I felt it was represented on AdCom.
Understood. Yeah, there there was no other, there was no other meeting other than the one, I mean, we, yeah, I did present the budget to the board back in January. You know, I I I you you get to see the budget first before anyone else else does. So we we actually presented the budget to you in Jan- on January twenty-sixth, if I'm not mistaken. And um again, there was no indication that there there was anything that we should, we should move any changes at that point. Um and you know, if if there are things that people wanna discuss, we you should discuss them sooner rather than later because obviously that has an implication upon where we are, but but I do think, you know, the 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 where we are is about as good as we're gonna, we're gonna get until something, a couple of things happen. One is the fact we get back to normal. And two, we we get some federal aid, which is entirely possible. I'll be talking about about that later on tonight. And then the 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 third thing is the fact that uh if we see some other, the only, the only number that's we don't know about at this point in time is the uh south southeast uh regional school budget, which we have budgeted at a relatively high seven and a half percent increase. But that that is the number that came in last year, so we're using that same increase. We're hoping that number comes in less. If it does, then we then we have additional savings to present to to everyone as well.
I think, I think going forward, I think you guys all know that I'm a a process stickler. And I think every year we should have the same process where we have a meeting, we're presented the three options, we talk about them, and then we take a vote. You know, I know this year was a little different. We were on a meeting with all three boards. It wasn't a meeting like this, like we were in a mode that we could not speak, like only the chairs could speak. We were in listen-only mode, so it wasn't a discussion that I think should happen every year, and I think we should just have the same process every year. So that there is no confusion.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. This was a different year and this was not the year. This was more of a how do we survive this year mode as opposed to looking at ways in which we can either you know, and 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 do we wanna severely cut the budget? Yes, it's no, and because I think everybody wants to maintain services at least. I've never seen anything come differently from the town. They wanna at least maintain the services we have. And the and the other thing was, we certainly weren't gonna grow the budget significantly because there wasn't any ability to do that. So this was sort of a unique year, year in which there really wasn't a uh there wasn't any really options other than what, at least maintain what we got option on the table, and that's what we tried to do.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, my personal thought would be, you know, the direction isn't necessarily to just dial the budget up two and a half percent every year. I know there's things we can't control, but you know, to look at the savings and come up with the savings to dial the budget up the least amount as possible. So if we have to do dial up, you know, salaries, you know, maybe we we pare back expenses without cutting services, and I think that there I know it's easier said than done, but there are some creative ways, and I know, you know, in the goals we talked about to challenge every department to find savings, I think that will go a long way with the residents too to let them know where each department has cut services. So you know, that's a story that we need, that we need to tell.
Yeah, and I agree. I and I think that, you know, the budget does contain several areas where there's been zero increases. Um and I think that's something that, you know, that story does need to get told because right now, I I I don't want people to think that we're just willy-nilly raise the budget two and a half percent because we didn't. Um in fact, there were many cases where we raised it less than that, um because we were able to find ways to to uh reduce costs. And if there was areas where salaries were, where it could be reduced, we did that. Um so it wasn't like we just carried the same number forward every single year and added two and a half percent to it. So I think I appreciate you you raising it from that perspective.
Yeah, so let's tell that story, you know, let's tell that story to everyone, you know, the success as well.
Fair enough. That's fair.
Well, and and I think, I think too, uh as well, you know, even though you say it's a no idea, Bill, I I still think um as a board, we didn't have that discussion. And um even even though, even so it was verbally said, so we're coming, you know, um i- if if that meeting at the summit um like Leah said, we weren't all in a room, you know, in in the past, I've heard um you know, you come before um, you know, board before I was on it. Uh but come before the board and say, give me a direction. So um I don't think, you know, because that didn't take place. Um I I think we have to just answer to the people, and I I'm not suggesting any of this, but there's always something to do. There's always, there's always cuts. Um you know, what makes me a little nervous is that we just keep digging into the free cash. And you know, I mean, and hopefully we'll regenerate. Um but so you know, and because this is my first budget on this board. So I I I guess I I didn't realize, so we're not gonna hear from, department heads don't come in front of this board.
Only if the board wants, wants them to appear. I mean, it's, I mean, there there, you can see from the document itself, there was a pretty lean. The only area that really had to increase this year was the, was the fire department because they had that they had the grants that that ran out, so that that was to maintain those off, those firefighters. Rest of them were were pretty low, were pretty lean. Um there weren't any, there's no new positions other than, like I said, that other than the grant positions, but those were already established positions in the town. But there's no new, no, no new positions.
Well, what why I'm asking is it because it because uh let me look at, I'm thinking of everybody, because I think I'm the only one sitting board member now that has sat on advisory committee. Um the process that happens there is so much more extensive. And and I mean, that, you know, um and I I understand there's only five of us. And and to get everybody to to be a liaison, because even on advisory committee, it's 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 pretty extensive, but on on their end, they have department heads are gonna sit down and they go over their entire budget. And questions are asked back and forth. So it's just a little bizarre to me that we're asked to do the same thing that advisory committee is asked to do, which is to recommend this budget forward. And we don't, we don't hear any of that.
We're going to AdCom.
Yeah.
So we go to AdCom. I don't think we need to recreate the process. We just need to join AdCom.
Right.
Oh, but 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 I don't, I don't think, I don't think um it it happens very often.
Well, actually, it does. It does, actually, yeah. You get, you get a lot of board members that that attend.
I think we're, I think we're actually lucky this year cuz it's televised for the first time. Now I don't have to leave my house. I can watch it, watch it on demand. You can go back and watch.
That that's, that's the huge thing, you know, so certainly for a lot of us, but you know, I don't, I've know, I've seen Ed at quite a few Ad- AdCom committee meetings and uh last year and um you know, I it just makes it easier uh for us to be able to uh watch it on TV, zoom in if we want to generally. Um I don't, I don't know about Ed, but myself, and I'm certainly, Chris went to his share of AdCom committee meetings too. You sit and listen, you know, it's 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 from my point of view. AdCom's uh decision to ask the questions, but I'm certainly gaining information by sitting there and listening to the banter back and forth. Um because I think, uh I'm sorry if it was Leah or Bill that that said it. Uh would be counterproductive to bring everybody back in front of us at the same time. I think it 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 means it's how important it is for us uh to sit in or at least now listen in. Uh especially to the important, to the ones that you feel you need more information on. Maybe it's the fire, maybe it's, you don't need as much on DPW cuz you went through the the budget and there wasn't a lot there. Uh you know, it's incumbent upon us, you know, um when I first came on the board and was told that, you know, there was only one meeting every two weeks that we had to uh you know, be a part of, you know, you're on the board for a while, you realize, you know, there's possibly three meetings a week, especially this time of the year, uh that we're a part of. So um you know, I think a little bit incumbent upon us to listen in at at AdCom. Um you know, especially if it's a department you feel that that more information needs to be garnered from.
My my point isn't to, you know, to to say that this board isn't doing its duty. But I did sit on AdCom for three years and up until now, it being televised. Not that many, not that many of board of selectmen were at those meetings to listen to, to, to that. Um and so I just, I guess maybe I assumed it was done a little bit on this end. You know, and um if people are watching this year, um you know, if we're, if individually, we're, you know, we're watching AdCom to um, you know, to to hear the process, yeah, I think that's great because I think this is a an unprecedented year for us. But in the past, I, you know, I'm, I I don't wanna, well, I am gonna disagree. There aren't that many board of selectmen that came to, the three years I sat on AdCom. There weren't that many board of selectmen that were there when the budgets were being discussed. So that's.
Steph, can I, can I interject here? Cuz basically, what you're, what you're saying is if if we, if a selectman doesn't go to AdCom, they don't look at or question anything in the budget because there's a lot of times in the budgets over the years that if I had an issue with DPW or fire, I would go to Bill, I would connect with Roger or whoever. So it doesn't have to be, you have to go to AdCom to go through and review and be comfortable with the budget.
Absolutely, and I would agree with you, Chris. I think I just thought maybe the process was a little bit different, that's all. I wasn't, I wasn't saying to to be disrespectful to anybody on this board or any other board. I guess maybe the the um experience there with us all in the same room and asking the questions and sometimes you don't think of a question, but someone else asked it, so um there was no disrespect meant to anybody sitting on this board or any other board. I guess maybe I thought the process on this side was gonna be a little bit different, that's all. That's really.
If I can just interject a little bit here, cuz I I do think there's a couple of things that have that have helped this year, and that is the fact that you effectively heard from every one of your department heads during the past year because they've all appeared before you to present their their various departments and their operations. So if they were concerned about uh their budget or anything like that, that's another great opportunity to do that. To ask the questions then. I think, I think what what I'm, what it's, there's a fine line between overkill and underkill. All right, and I'm trying, not clearly not trying to underkill, but I but I don't wanna overkill either in terms of how many times you wanna review something that we've already presented. So if there are questions still lingering, I'm always open to to questions. I'm always open to questions and answering those questions for, or bring the the board, the group before you, to answer those questions for you. That process never stops. And I think, I want to be clear about that, that that this is still an open book and that we want to be able to tell the story as Leah correctly points out, we should tell a good story when there's a good story. Um, and if there's something needs to be corrected, let's correct it.
Yeah. No disrespect at all.
I know that, no.
Maybe I thought the process was going to be a little different because that's what it was, you know, sitting there. So, uh, no, no disrespect meant to anybody.
No.
Board, I know that.
I think this is a good example tonight, you know, as we were attending AdCom and heard something and now here we are.
Yeah.
You know, talking, not having to, you know, double dip and do the same thing twice, so.
Yeah, fair enough. Any other questions about that, that at all?
No.
That was a good discussion. Thank you.
Um, Mike's not around, Bill?
He's not, so, um, so, uh, if you want to go right to my report, Mike is on vacation this week, um, is, um, you know, he's been taking some time off with his wife and I don't, can't say that I blame him, so. Uh, it's a good week to take off. It's school vacation week and she's off this week, so he's able to take some time off, which is good. So just a couple things, um, to remind, to, to, to point out to you. One is the the fact that I have a letter that is, um, before you, um, relative to a, a, uh, the the federal aid. Um, yeah, I I provided you with a, with a letter. Um, the, uh, on, uh, aid, uh, federal aid support. So we, the GFOA, the government. Is it, somebody got their camera on? It's not me, not coming for me. Uh, so the, uh, the, we have a a federal aid request, uh, a support letter request that's coming from GFOA. That's the Government Finance Officers Association has, has, uh, became this, sent this to me through Murray. And, um, and so they've asked that that local cities and towns provide a letter of support to their congressman and the two US senators for consideration on the Fed, on the COVID nineteen relief package. Um, if you've been following the news at all, there's a one point nine trillion dollar package that's before Congress right now. Um, it was sponsored by the Democrats. Uh, the the Republicans have have are looking for a smaller package. But, uh, right now, the Democrats control the House and the Senate. So it looks as though the 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 one point nine trillion dollar package is getting traction. Um, a letter of support here in Foxborough is for two, is all for all three Democratic seats, uh, to treat, two Democratic senators and one Democratic, um, uh, congressman. And as a result, um, this will be a vote of support for those, those, uh, the sense from the board. I I actually wrote it on behalf of the board, but signed it by myself, you know, on behalf of the board. So I didn't want to send it without having you all look at it first. And I wanted to make sure you were okay with the, with the, with the message being sent today. So before I sent it out. So I am, strangely enough, I do have a meeting with the congressman this Thursday, Thursday morning, so, uh, first, the first time to meet him, so he's actually gonna be part of the, uh, uh, the Chamber Commerce Breakfast in the morning, uh, which will be done through, through, through Zoom, so it won't be an actual breakfast, but, um, they're actually gonna, you know, we're gonna get a chance to talk with him directly, so this is kind of timely in that respect to have that letter of support in place. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have it.
Yeah, Bill, just to clarify, are you gonna send three separate letters, one to each of them?
That's correct, yeah, one to one to each. That's right.
That's it, other than that.
Okay.
Unrelated but related, um, I actually planned on going to that Thursday morning meeting. Do we have any concerns about posting that? Like, do we need to make sure that we're?
No, that's, that's, it's being held by the chamber, and if you're just participating as as a member of the chamber, I think you're probably okay.
I don't know. We got invitations as selectmen, so I think everyone got got invited, so.
You did, okay. So actually, attending something like that, which is a more or less a a a business or social, but you're not going to be discussing town business other than, you know, I'll, I'll present the issues that we have, but in case anybody wants to, you won't be debating anything as far as the meeting, though, so I think it'll be all right. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay. Uh, the second thing I had was, uh, the, um, I actually have a, um, let me see, let's go back to this, okay. Yeah, I have got three donations. One is for the COA, a sixty dollar donation made to the COA. I have another one that's for the, uh, for the Foxborough Cultural Council of seventy dollars. And another donation of a hundred dollars, uh, to the veterans, uh, from the Knights of Columbus. Um, I can give you the names of the the FCC Festival Cultural Council was by for seventy dollars from the tote bug, tote bag fundraiser profits. It's from Ellen Cosgrove, Bridget White, uh, Sarah Hayden, Sidney Crisp, and Brian Burke. All right, and then, um, okay, and then, um, so, and then, so those three, those are three donations that I had as well. Um, I just want to announce to the board that the, I just recite, I just received paperwork from the Cultural Council today that we received a seventy-two hundred dollar grant from the state for the annual, uh, Arts Council, Arts Cultural, Arts Council Grant from the state, and I'll be signing that, uh, probably as early as tomorrow. Okay, all right.
Great. Any, uh, selectmen's update, anybody? Um, just go ahead, Leah.
Um, you guys have heard us update about the wayfinding signs for a while. Um, and we got some proofs and did some feedback, so I think those are gonna finally go to fabrication, right, Bill? I think you weighed in on those.
Yeah, I did.
I feel like we're in a, at a point now, I know you guys keep hearing this talk about these things, but I really think we're there, we're ready to have them fabricated. And I would think we'll be seeing them up fairly shortly, you know, just depending whatever production time is, so more branding, you know, that we have the banners uptown, these will be the signs that, you know, show where parking is and where Town Hall is and things like that.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Should be, it should be a nice addition to the downtown. It should be.
Um, last thing, maybe on the selectmen's update, unless anybody else had anything else that this is election time of the year. Um, uh, the, uh, election process is open. When does it close, uh, Bill?
Close in about a month, as I, as I understand it. I don't have the exact date, but I believe it's about a month from now.
March fifteenth-ish?
March fifteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, but, uh, anybody thinking there's a lot of seats that are open up across the board? Uh, if anybody's thinking, please get their paperwork in on time. Other than that, uh, let's move on to action items.
Doc, actually, under that, boards and committees, you know, we appointed tonight to the Historic Commission. Um, you know, and it took us a while to get our arms around that. So Christina, that's something we should probably look at early too, and you know, if groups have open seats, we should probably, you know, make sure we advertise those as well, because, you know, sometimes I think people stay on these boards because no one else steps up. So if we let them know where the open seats are, I mean, if we can get more people involved, like, like Sean tonight, who, you know, is kind of new to town and involved.
Thank you.
And just so you know, the, um, papers can be pulled March fifteenth and need to be signed up until five PM, and there is no COVID provision for online signatures, so you do have to get those signatures in person, just have people bring their own pen, clean the pens in between, and do it safely with masks, but it does need to be done in person.
Okay, thank you, Christina. All right, Steph, agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to weigh in on that point, that last point that Christina made. That's actually an interesting point that Nick, that Christina indicated that there is no COVID uh, way around that, that people have to go and get in-person signatures, so makes it more difficult. Uh, that's a statewide limitation and something that I would, I intend to talk with with Representative Barrows when I see him this week to see if that can be addressed somehow, if there was a different way of doing it. I was actually, that concern was raised to me by another elected official in town and and, uh, and I, I said, you know, it's actually kind of interesting because you would think that we addressed most of these things, that they would, they would take a more aggressive step in dealing with that, so so people didn't come in, you know, person to person with people to try and get signatures. But, um, but apparently it wasn't, it hasn't been addressed, so just want to make you aware of that.
It's true, Bill, because, so, I mean, for me, last year, I mean, the whole election process was different because of the COVID. But I had pulled my papers and got my signatures before everything, everything shut down. So I mean, that part was easy, but, I mean, we didn't ask people to hold signs, and not only that, like, even at work, because I'm working somewhere where people are coming in and signing charge slips, we're wiping pens down with with, you know, so it's like for you to stand somewhere and hand someone a pen to sign your paper and then hand it to somebody else and, you know, um, I would suggest if any, you know, if anybody, um, is deciding to to go that route, maybe bring a couple of pens or bring some, you know, wipes with you or whatever, because, I mean, that's that whole touching and passing and and whatnot, but, um, yeah, I mean, I guess whoever thought we would be where we are right now. But, yeah.
Right.
It's an easy, it's an easy life.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah.
All right, action items?
Okay. We have a motion to approve tuition reimbursement to Detective Mac Bonn and Berger in the amount of one thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Great job with the pronunciation on that one, Stephanie.
I looked at it a couple of times, Bill.
It's not an easy one.
Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
And then we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Good night, everybody. Have a good week.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.